Yeah, my agenda's missing stuff.
Good evening. This meeting of the Essex County Board of County Commissioners is hereby called to order. This meeting is being livestreamed in addition to taking place here in person. Roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Commissioner Cooper?
Here.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Mercado?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Sebold?
Here.
Commissioner Sermons?
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Murray Thomas, absent. Commissioner President Palmaris?
Here. Please stand for the salute to the flag and ask Commissioner Mercado to lead us to the salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please just stand for a moment of silence in honor of those we've lost since the last time we came together. Thank you. I have before me certification from the Deputy Clerk to this meeting in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Madam Deputy Clerk, do we have any transmittance to be approved?
No, Mr. President, we do not.
Okay, Madam Deputy Clerk, are there topics for discussion?
No, Mr. President, there are none.
All right, let's go on to public comment. Tonight's meeting is a combined conference board meeting. We will vote on every item on the agenda, so if there's any member of the public who would like to comment on agenda items only, please come to the microphone and state your name and affiliation for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. There will be time later in the evening for public comment on other matters, so I please ask you to limit things to agenda items only. Let me recognize Commissioner Luciano has joined us. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Winifred Victor Hines, and I am the Executive Director of the Wequay Park Association. And in my concern, I have several concerns on the agenda. When I first took a look at it, I was surprised, rather shocked, because of all the committees. And it seems as if, you know, you're not asking any community input on the committees, and then, so you're just rushing everything in. And so, a lot of the committees, for instance, you know, like, why do you need a budget? I can't, I haven't had time right now to look at it, because I just arrived. But from memory, like, you have a finance and a budget, and you have some of these other committees that seem to be redundant. And so, I'm concerned about that. So, that's what I would like for you guys to address, to see why so many committees.
I'm having to address it right now if you want that answer.
Yeah, so...
These are standing committees. Every year we have had this. We've had these committees way before.
Yeah, but just because you have had it doesn't mean...
It's not back and forth. If you want me to answer it, I'll answer it to give you the answer, because you asked about it. These are standing committees that have been here for, since probably the beginning of the Commissioner Board, and committees have been added. These are only Commissioner Board. These are not public out there Commission. This is just for the Board to work together in smaller groups, and that's how that works.
Yeah, but it's just making sure that good projects don't get lost between all these committees.
Projects don't get lost between committees because they're embedded here.
So, it seems as if, you know, you're trying to block the public from being involved in any of these committees and being involved in any of the community input, so in the decision-making. And there was something else also with the vendors, right? I can't see it right now, because it's too much, and I didn't get a chance to review it while I'm here. But how many, like, the vendors, right? How many times have the same vendor been used within the last five years? And in terms of the no-bid contract, you know, what's happening with that? Are there any minorities or people of color who are involved as well? Because, I mean, it just seems shocking, all of this. So, you know, if any of you can answer that, you know...
Do you have any other questions, Madam?
How?
Do you have any other questions?
So, will you answer it, or will it be in writing?
Off the top of my head, I cannot tell you how many vendors we deal with. We deal with so many.
Okay, but you don't know...
All of the contracting is done per the state guidelines, not our guidelines. This is the law. We have to follow the law.
So, a lot of no-bid contracts or collective purchase?
If you want me to answer it, you need to listen, because I listen to when you speak. So, there is an affirmative action committee. These committees that you've been talking about are committees that we make within the Board. This is not intended, nor they have ever been, to be part of others. We have committees that do bring in people, advisory boards that the county executive brings forth, and we've got them here.
Yeah, but I'm concerned that you're using these committees as gatekeepers.
They're public meetings. They're held here.
You know, so just, yeah...
They're held here with the public, no different than the last time we had a meeting with the banking committee. We held that here in the public. And these were advertised, just like these meetings. There's nothing secretive about it. There's nothing else to that effect.
Well, it doesn't have to be secretive.
No, of course they're not. That's why we put them on the public.
But just the way, the process that you're doing it...
The process is open and transparent, like everything else that we do, Madam.
It could leave out also a whole bunch of other people, you know?
The public, it is a public process, and it's transparent, just like every other meeting that we do. Perhaps you fail to see them advertised, but they're here. And they are advertised, just like you learned about this meeting.
Well, I haven't seen them advertised.
Well, maybe you haven't looked hard enough. We don't meet all the time with it.
Maybe you've hidden it.
There's no hidden, because it gets so long, we don't do it.
It could be, because I haven't seen it.
Okay. Your time is up, Madam. Thank you. We'll address any other questions we have there in writing. If you want, you can leave your information with Adam in the back.
Okay, thank you.
Recognizing Commissioner Vice President Murray Thomas has joined us. Good evening. Matt, can you address that for me, please?
Thank you.
He's gonna have your hand there.
Sir. I think you, Michelle Boynton. And I just...
Good evening.
Question one, everyone has their right to speak.
Yes.
And, you know, without frowns and faces being given, like, okay. But again, like, the minorities, if you have something, even though it was five years, does that mean the same people are the same ones, and who you bring or who you don't bring? Is it open for so many other? My sister, she has a construction company. All I hear is this Bloomfield, this, and I work in Glen Ridge, but there was a lot of problems going on, again, with Bloomfield, that things wasn't done. So, sometimes things do have to change. What's it gonna bring about a change where five years is not just gonna be him, or the next few years is gonna be this one's cousins or friend? It's collective. I mean, it's, we can do so much as well, too. But I just think that everyone should respect what somebody say, you hold your head, you get upset. You can't do that, because we're human. We have rights to speak on anything, and if you're not for it, you're kind of against it, so just, just don't. So, when is the change gonna come? That's, that's my question, you know? Just because with something for five or 10 years, if it works, it's still time to bring, I mean, we grow. Bring something new on board. We just can't have the same people doing the same thing over and over again. So, that's just my question, if you can answer that. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Anyone else on agenda items?
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioner President and Commissioners. I just wanted to speak about the Commissions. I know there were resolutions, so sorry, not as organized as I would like to be. But there were resolutions about the committees. There is committees, let's see, sorry, here we go, 25 through 36, 37. But I'm actually focused on a few of them. For all these committees, I just wanted to make sure that there's public notice given, as well as rich opportunity for public input for these committees. Especially, there was one which was dealing with public transportation. That was important to me, as well as any others. I just wanted to add that and make sure it was part of your consideration, as well as your thinking. Thank you. Uh, sorry. Norm Suteria, 99 Berkeley Avenue, Bloomfield, New Jersey.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Madam Deputy Clerk, let the record reflect as to what else wishing to speak at this time. So, let's move on to ordinance and introduction, ordinance on introduction and first reading. Do we have any?
No, we do not.
Okay, let's move on to ordinance on second reading and public hearing for listening purposes. Do we have any?
No, we do not.
Okay, let's move on to ordinance, resolutions on second reading and public hearing. Do we have any?
Yes, Mr. President, we have one, ordinance number O-2026-00001.
Okay, let's move to public hearing ordinance O-2026-00001. It will be read into the record at a later time. I hereby declare public hearing and ordinance number O-2026-00001 open. If there's any member of the public who would like to comment for or against this ordinance, please come to the microphone, state your name and affiliation. You have three minutes to speak. Okay, let the record reflect as to what was the speaker at this time. Ms. Shabazz, do you have any questions or comments on this ordinance?
No, Mr. President.
Ms. McInerney?
Just again, I don't know if it was ever resolved with regard to the parking deck increases. I had made an inquiry about the issue of the financing on the garages, and whether or not that had any impact, or whether or not prohibited either in full or a portion of that.
I think we emailed something on that.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, and there's no, there's no...
There's nothing? Okay, thank you very much. I didn't see that.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Do you have someone to motion, a motion to close public comment?
I'll move it.
Moved by Sebold, second by Richardson. Do I have the same mover and second to approve ordinance O-2026-00001?
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebold?
Yes.
Commissioner Sermons?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner President Palmaris?
Yes.
So moved.
Let's move on to Resolutions 1 and 2, which are from the Office of the County Administrator, and will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board. Mr. Director DelGaudio will handle these items.
Good evening, Mr. DelGaudio.
Good evening, Mr. President. Frank DelGaudio, County Risk Manager. Resolution number one is for the renewal of the property insurance coverage for the Essex County Correctional Facility. The premium represents a 5% increase over expiring. Correctional facilities is not in everyone's appetite, and we're fortunate that our incumbent carrier, Factory Mutual, agreed to provide a quotation. That was the only quotation we received. The second resolution is for the excess flood insurance for the Essex County Correction Facility. The facility lies in a flood zone. As we remember during Hurricane Sandy, that we had substantial flood damage. So, this premium, fortunately, was a decrease of $10,500 over the expiring, with the same incumbent carrier that's access.
Thank you. Ms. Shabazz, any questions on 1 and 2?
No, Mr. President.
Ms. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions on 1 and 2?
Motion.
Moved by Vice President, by Commissioner Cooper, second by Mercado. Roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk, on 1 and 2.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebold?
Yes.
Commissioner Sermons?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner President Palmaris?
Yes.
So moved.
Number three has been withdrawn by the Administration, so we're gonna move on to number four, which is from the Department of Economic Development, Training and Employment, Division of Housing and Community Development, and that will be read into the record at a later time. Good evening, Mrs. Soros.
Good evening. John Soros, Division Director, Division of Housing and Community Development. Through you, Mr. President, resolution number four. We are, the Board of Commissioners, previously authorized the awarding of Program Year 2025 Community Development Block Grant, funding in the amount of $12,000 for Montclair Neighborhood Development Corporation for Youth Programming Activities. At this time, MNDC is requesting that the unexpendable balance of $12,000 be reallocated for senior programming activities.
Thank you. Ms. Shabazz, any questions?
No, Mr. President.
Ms. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions on number four?
Motion.
Moved by Commissioner Cooper, second by Sebold. Roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk, on number four.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebold?
Yes.
Commissioner Sermons?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner President Palmaris?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Soros.
Mr. President, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you so much for sending the link for the grant from the other meeting. Question, is it, does it go out the same time every year when you do the open call?
Through you, Mr. President. We normal, the normal timeframe is late Octo, in early October. Through the months of November and December, we usually close our applications at the end of December.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soros.
Thank you.
Let's move on to Resolutions 5 through 15, which are from the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs. They will be read into the record at a later time. Good evening, Mrs. Yates.
Good evening, Joshua Yates, Essex County Parks. Number five is a contract award with Roden Pro and Lane Laboratories to lowest responsive bidders to furnish and deliver supplemental frozen and live animal food at the Turtleback Zoo. Amount not to exceed $375,000. This is for a number of animals over at the zoo population, including raptors, small mammals, reptiles, and amphibians. Number six is a contract award, lowest responsive bidder, to provide landscape maintenance services at Turtleback Zoo. Amount not to exceed $353,570. This is with LIT Inc. The dates of this service would be April 1st of this year through December 31st, and then there'd be a stoppage until April 1st of next year, until December 31st of 2027. It is $16,865 a month, which, it's 18 months of service, so the fixed total is $303,570. And then there's allowance of $50,000, for a total of $353,570. Number seven, a contract award to Plainfield Fruit and Produce and Cutler Produce, the two lowest responsive bidders, to deliver produce to the Turtleback Zoo. Amount not to exceed $165,000. And this is for any of the animals in the zoo that obviously eat produce, including mammals, birds, reptiles, and vertebrates. Number eight, a contract award to fire and security technologies for monitoring fire and security elevator alarms, exercising the 24th month contract option, not to exceed $95,640. Again, this is for any fire alarms over in the various buildings throughout the park system. If the alarm goes off, they would call whoever the facility manager is, and then if there is an actual emergency, they would contact 911 or the Sheriff's Department. Number nine, a contract award to note a fee. The lowest responsive bidder to provide Essex County Golf Course's tee time integrated services. Amount not to exceed $30,000. This is a new service we're offering for golfers this year. Basically, what it is, is it's free for golfers to sign up. They would get a text message notification if there's a tee time that someone canceled last minute, and they would be able to then sign up for that tee time on a first-serve basis. Number 10, approval of sub-grant agreements for the 2026 Local Arts Program. Amount not to exceed $394,336. Fifty-two applicants were funded this year. The grant awards range from $2,400 to $10,000, depending on what they're applying for. And if the Board is interested and would like to pass along to their constituents, applications for this program open on June 1st, and then the deadline be August 15th of this year. And you can find the link when it's available on the park's website under Cultural Affairs. Number 11, approval of the sub-grant agreements for the 2026 Local History Program. Amount not to exceed $81,000. This is for 14 applicants, ranging, the grant awards range from $943,000 to $10,000. And again, it's the same, the same dates as the other program. The applications are available June 1st, and then the deadline is August 15th. Number 12 is authorization UC Essex County Recreation Open Space Trust Fund to fund Westside Park Community Building HVAC improvements. Amount not to exceed $617,300. This is for the labor, materials, and equipment services necessary to complete the work, confirm ventilation and exhaust requirements, and then introduce equipment and controls that can be serviced safely. At a later date, we'll be coming back to the Board to actually award this contract. Number 13, authorization UC Essex County Recreation Open Space Trust Fund to fund landscape maintenance contracts, amount not to exceed $500,000. Essex County has 10 landscape maintenance contracts for the parks and reservations. Of those, there's three landscape maintenance vendors, and this is supplemental money in order to pay those vendors for those services. This is something we've done in previous years. Number 14, authorization UC Essex County Recreation Open Space Trust Fund for engineering, design, and construction services for HVAC replacement and upgrade at the Cody Arena. Amount not to exceed $194,600. This is to fund, an item on the agenda that's upcoming. Specifically, it would be to service the existing, to service and replace existing units at Cody Arena, and then to perform heating and cooling calculations to confirm ventilation and exhaust requirements. Number 15, authorization UC Essex County Recreation Open Space Trust Fund for a pump station control panel at Hendricks Field. Amount not to exceed $139,210. There's an issue with one of the pump houses over at Hendricks Field, and this is the funds that would be used to replace it. And again, we'll be coming back to the Board at a later time to use those funds with the vendor.
Thank you.
Happy answer. Any questions?
Ms. Shabazz, any questions on 5 through 15?
No, Mr. President, they were reviewed previously.
Ms. McInerney?
Resolution 10 and 11 are two separate grants with subrecipients?
Joshua Yates, Essex County Parks. Through you, Mr. President. That's correct. One is history, and one is arts.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
What other?
I just wanted to comment.
Hold on, sorry, go ahead, Ms. McInerney. Before we move on to questions?
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Resolution 9, that's a 24-month contract, or 12?
That is a 24-month contract.
Ms. McInerney, are you good?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I'm done.
Commissioner Sebold?
All the items on the agenda dealing with open space have to do with the Open Space Advisory Board, which met and reviewed all of these and agreed that these should be on the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Vice President?
Through you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Yates. Quick question, not exactly related to these particular items, but just related to the calendar for the year. I received an inquiry from the City of Newark, one of their members, I believe, of their Park Recreation Department. I just wanted to ask what's the best way to coordinate in preparation for events that took place last summer through the county at the parks? They wanted to kind of reach out and see what's the best way to coordinate in advance for this year, to see if things are still on the agenda. Just wanted some guidance on the best direction to point them to.
Sure. Joshua Yates, Essex County Parks. Through you, Mr. President. The best, the best way to go about that is to call the park's main number, which is 973-268-3500, and then just ask to be connected to the Permits Department, and they can certainly verify any of that information.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner, would you like to move it?
No, I'd just like to move it all.
That's what I asked. Okay, that sounds good. I will do that instead. Do you have someone a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richardson. Roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk. This is for 5 through 15.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebold?
Yes.
Commissioner Sermons?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner President Palmaris?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Yates.
Thank you.
Let's move on to Resolutions 16, 17, and Addendum 66, which are for the Department of Public Works. They'll be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Coulter, I believe you're handling this?
I am, Mr. President. Number 16, Department of Public Works, Division of Engineering, Contract Award to Air Systems Maintenance LLC, the lowest responsible bidder to provide and replace the two evaporative coolers at 320-321 University Avenue. Amount not to exceed $858,680. 17, Department of Public Works, again, to provide engineering, design, and construction service for HVAC replacement and upgrades at Cody Arena, which Mr. Yates just mentioned. French and Perilla Associates, amount not to exceed $194,600. And what was the last one, Mr. President?
Number 66.
66.
The last one, actually.
Department of Public Works, the State of New Jersey, Department of Community Affairs, Acceptance and Execution of a Grant Application for 2026 LRIG Hilltop Reservation Dog Park.
Thank you. Ms. Shabazz, any questions on these?
No, Mr. President.
Ms. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions, 16, 17, and 66? Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you. Which item, number 66? I didn't get a chance to read that.
It's a grant.
It's allowing us to apply for a grant.
We're just applying it. Okay, thank you.
That's why it came last, so we figured, but just an application request. Any other questions? Commissioner, would you like to move it?
Yes, please, thank you.
Moved by Cooper, second by Mercado. Roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk, for 16, 17, and 66.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebold?
Yes.
Commissioner Sermons?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner President Palmaris?
Yes.
So moved.
Let's move on to number 18, which is from the Office of the Sheriff. We'll be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Coulter, is that you?
Yes, this is a contract with Millennium Strategies LLC to provide consulting for grant writing. 36-month agreement, amount not to exceed $72,000. And they have already worked on 15 grants applications.
Great, thank you. Ms. Shabazz, any questions?
No, Mr. President.
Ms. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions on 18?
Motion.
Moved by Cooper, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mercado. Roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk, on number 18.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebold?
Yes.
Commissioner Sermons?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner President Palmaris?
Yes.
So moved.
Let's move on to number 19, which is from the Office of the Prosecutor. We'll be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Coulter?
Mr. President, due to resolution approving participation with the State of New Jersey, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant administered by the Office of the Attorney General, Department of Law and Public Safety, accepting a subaward, JAG-17TF, under state contract contract for a period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026.
Thank you. Mr. Vaz, any questions?
No, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, questions on 19? Seeing none, so I'm going to move it?
Move it.
Moved by Richardson?
Second.
Second by Mercado, roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Sermons?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner President Palmaris?
Yes.
So moved.
Let's move on to resolutions 20 through 24, which are temporary emergency appropriations for 2026 from various resources. They will be read into the record at a later time.
Yes, Mr. President. Item 20, an amount of $168,958. It's a grant we received from the state of New Jersey for the Edwin Byrne Memorial Assistance Grant. This is going to supply, provide funding for two detectives assigned to the Narcotics Task Force. It provides for two detectives, 76% of their time and 62% fringe, and there's no county match. Item 21, also from the state of New Jersey, an amount of $11,020 and 14 cents to provide body armor. These will be for eight vests for the prosecutor's office, and with this, they will be currently, they'll be completely up to date, and there's no county match for this grant either. Item 22 is also for body armor, in this case for our Department of Corrections, an amount of $61,135.78. This will provide for 47 of the 72 vests that they're going to need to do in 2026, and they will do the balance of 25 later on this year through an additional grant. Item 23 is a charitable donation, an amount of $47,924 to the Office of the Sheriff, generously given by Dr. Topaco. This will provide for a horse trailer to make sure that our mounted unit is able to transport the horses safely and securely, and there's no county match. Item 24 is from the Department of State, New Jersey Department of State. It's a reimbursement to us for the 2025 early voting general election in amount of $31,653.66. This is for the Office of the County Clerk, and it's reimbursing us for printing supplies and overtime expenses during this nine-day period, and there's no county match.
Thank you. Mr. Vaz, any questions on 20 to 24?
No, these were also reviewed, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
Motion.
Moved by Cooper, second. Second by Mercado, roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Sermons?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner President Palmaris?
Yes.
So moved.
Let's move on to resolutions 25 through 62. Resolution 25 to 43 are resolutions creating the Oversight and Investigative Committees for the Board. These are the committees that we have every year, and they're just freshly reappointed every year. These are working boards by the Board. This is not meant to have members of the public involved. When we have these committee meetings, they are advertised just like any other meeting that we have. We don't always have to meet at times, because sometimes we only need them as necessary. But this is routine committees that we've had established here since probably inception of the Board, and a few added over time. So at times, some of them are here. For example, number 26 is the Banking Review Committee, which takes place every October. That is advertised publicly. The banks that we do business with come in, they tell us about their portfolio, what they've done for Essex County and so forth. That's all they are. They're not brand-new committees. We just have to reestablish them every year. We're also moving in this, we are resolutions creating, our resolutions 44 to 62 are in memoriams, commendations, proclamation resolution that can be read into the record at a later time. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments on any of these? Most of you are serving on the same boards again. We didn't make really any changes. Moved by Mercado?
Second.
Second by Cooper. Roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Sermons?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner President Palmaris?
Yes.
So moved.
All right, let's see. Madam Deputy Clerk, do we have any other added starters?
Yes, Mr. President, we have three remaining. Resolution 63 from the Superintendent of Elections, Resolution 64 from the Department of Corrections, and Resolution 65 from the Office of Purchasing.
All right, let's go to 66, I'm sorry, 63, which will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Coulter will handle these three items.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, this Superintendent of Elections, Commissioner Registration Contract Award to Main Street Movers Region B to provide delivery and pickup of election machines and materials, 24-month contract from the date of award. Now, when you see the amount awarded, it is not to exceed $3 million. They have 531 machines, and they don't know when they're going to have special elections like tomorrow. So that's why this is not to exceed the $3 million, so they have enough funds in there if they needed it. Number 64 is the Department of Corrections, state of New Jersey, Community Affairs, Acceptance and Execution of a Grant Application, Medication Assistant Treatment Expansion, state required resolution to submit the grant application. And 65 is a name change, Office of Purchasing, approval of Second Lease Amendment for the assignment and assumption of lease name change and rent payment allocation for 213, 225 Holsey Street, Newark, New Jersey. It was just a name change from one company to another.
Thank you. Mr. Vaz, any questions on 63, 64, and 65?
No, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
63, the $3 million is not necessarily what we're going to spend. The $3 million is not to exceed.
Correct. Just to be sure. Not to exceed, just in case we need another election, anytime they have enough funds to be able to use it.
So we should see an uptick this year because of the unusual circumstance of a special election?
Correct.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions on 63, 64, and 65? Commissioner Vice President?
Through you, Mr. President. Thank you. My question was during a similar vein, so I know it's not to exceed the $3 million. Could you just refresh for both the board members and the public what the typical expenditure is? I know it ranges, of course, but what is the kind of estimate?
The election, there's 531, I believe, machines throughout the county, and they have to pay this vendor per machine. Every time they go out for a special election, they don't know. So I just ran, you may see a 20% change order in the near future, because they ran out of money for the old contract. So instead of running out of money, we just put in there not to exceed X dollars.
That makes sense.
This way, at least, we have the ability, they can run the elections without coming back to the Board all the time.
Well, maybe helpful, too, then, just so I can get a sense of the potential variable. If it's 531 now because of the special elections, how much do we typically have on a non-special election year? How many units or machines do we typically have?
We own 531, maybe, I think there's some extra. That's countywide. For this election, I don't know how many are in this district.
Commissioner, it may, it may range because of either Board of Ed or election years where, you know, some years, we don't, we have less elections than others. So I think that number fluctuates over a three- or four-year cycle.
Yeah, I'm aware, I'm aware. I'm just, and maybe I'm asking the question nebulously, and I apologize if I am. And again, I'm going to support the resolution because we need it. I just want to get clarity on the rough rate. So we have 531 machines that are...
Countywide.
Right. And 531 are going to be possibly used this election cycle, correct? Which is higher than usual, you said, because of special elections?
Well, example would be if we have to run in the city of Newark at-large election or something like that, you may only use, making a number up, 100 machines or 50 machines. So each election is different. They have a school board. Some towns have school board elections, some don't.
Yeah, Newark, a few other places, too.
Correct. So each one is different, and there's a rate per machine.
So what I'm hearing is that there's a range, we just want to be on the safe side, and you don't have a rough estimate of how many are going to be used more or less, and we just got to prepare for the worst.
And remember, we do get reimbursed for usage of elections.
Understandably. And just asking, because, you know, a number that big can stand out certainly to, you know...
And that's why I brought it up.
A voter, constituent, a resident, so happy for that clarification. Thank you.
Commissioner, we'll provide you with a per-unit number. I don't remember.
That's what I was getting at, the per-unit rough. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
We'll provide that to the clerk.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Cooper?
Do you recall what the total price was that we spent on the last contract?
Through you, Mr. President. No, I don't, but we can get you that number.
The number that's reflected in the documents is, it says $140 per machine. That's the number, right? The number's not going to change. And then the next question is, in here, it referenced that, I recall you guys had broken up the county into like sections. There's a reference in here saying that something has to go back out?
What happened was, there's two zones, Zone A and Zone B. Zone B came back because of this election tomorrow. They needed to get it on the agenda so we can have it. The next meeting, you will see Zone A. So both zones will be already hopefully approved by then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? So I'm going to move it?
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Cooper, second by Mercado, roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk, for 63, 64, 65.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Sermons?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner President Palmaris?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, let's move on to board, a report of board committees. Any committee, we haven't really had any committee meetings yet this year, so. Do we have any legislative reports? Any unfinished business? Seeing none. Any new business? Seeing none. Okay, public comment, let's go to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on any matter, please come to the microphone, say your name and affiliation. You have three minutes to speak.
Hello again, Winifred Victor Heinz, Executive Director of the Wequah Park Association. And this is basically old business, and I'm here again for the matter concerning the paused construction on a fourth baseball or softball field in Wequah Park. And you had promised, Commissioner Palmaris, that you were going to contact Dan Salvante in order to arrange a meeting between the Wequah Park Association, community members, and the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs regarding the planned baseball field and recent decisions. And we haven't heard from you. You promised again, and nothing happened, as usual. So no community input, as usual, little to no transparency, and you guys continue to do whatever it is that you want, just like with the community center when we had it two stories, and then it was knocked down to make it one story. Why? Nobody knows. You guys are going ahead and build this softball field that community members rarely use, because people from New York or Connecticut, as Commissioner Richardson pointed out, use it more so than the residents. And then you went ahead, and you gave your word that you were going to set up a meeting so that we can have input. And that was, what, December 3rd? And then I sent you an email, and I have it right here, okay? December 18th, asking you to facilitate this, and nothing. And then you claim that Ulysses Grant, okay, that you admire him, but he was about, what, integrity, which you have very little of, okay, based on your record. Now, I am sick and tired of coming here and having to tell you guys how to do your job, okay? I have things to do. You guys, you know, you don't pay attention to the public. You do whatever it is that you want, all right? It's not a kingdom. You're supposed to listen to us. Maybe you guys should take a course. I don't know, because I am tired of speaking to you and hoping for different results, okay? So we have here a petition with signatures, okay? I have some right here. You can take a look at it if you want, and Ms. Boynton also has some more. And it's been getting a lot of play on social media, and then people just talking to us, and people are enraged about this, okay? And they are sick and tired of not being represented by their public representatives. I mean, when are you guys going to learn? Okay? When are you going to stop disrespecting us and dismissing us? Enough is enough. Do your jobs. It's our taxpayer dollars. I work hard for this, okay? It's not your own business. You haven't created this, all right? So you can't go ahead and do whatever it is that you want. You have to listen to the public, okay?
30 seconds.
Thank you.
One moment. You're done. Now, I'm going to respond to it. Number one, you're not qualified to call me out on my character.
Oh, you don't know what I'm qualified about.
Number two, it isn't Ulysses Grant.
I will pick my qualifications against you any day of the week.
It is Ulysses Grant. There'll be one of us speaking now, because you had your moment.
Okay, go ahead. But do not insult me while you're speaking.
Secondly, you're not only qualified to call me out on my character, you can't even tell anybody my hero is not Ulysses Grant, it's Grover Cleveland, get that at least right. Third, every meeting, every meeting I call and I ask, is there any report in committees, the very committees that you criticize that we just created in secrecy? Every single one. If you come to the table, come accurately, at least. Lastly, I did not promise you a meeting. I suggested to Mr. Jackson that perhaps we should schedule a meeting with the Parks Department. You made leaps about promises. If you can go back and watch the video, let me know what timestamp I made a promise to you, because it's not there. There's only one promise I ever make, and that is to work hard and diligently, and that I do. And whether you believe it or not, I couldn't care less. Now, you're done. You can go back to the next meeting and criticize me, and you can send a million emails if you want.
And I know you could tell this, because you act as if you don't care at all.
Your time is now done. Your time is now done.
At all.
Your time is now done.
Okay? You act as if you don't care at all.
I don't care for being called out on my integrity.
And you, when you say something in public, you're supposed to follow it through, because because it's your job. It's your job. Get it right, okay?
And get it right so that...
Okay, I misspoke, Grover Cleveland. He was still about integrity, which you are not.
Have a good night.
Mr. President?
Next public speaker.
If I mind, Mr. President?
No, next public speaker.
I have something I'd like to add for the record.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just for the record, as one of the nine members of this board, I did take a personal privilege to meet with the county executive. And ma'am, we have in writing from your mayor, Roz Baraka, and the South Ward Councilman, Patrick Council, that they would like to see that field built. So I just would like to put that on the record, that those are members of your community voted in to represent your community that have put in writing that they would like to see it. Maybe you should start with them.
If I also...
Mr. Jackson! Hey, I want the meeting here, and it is now, I'm calling a Mr. Jackson to speak. If you cannot follow along, you have to go. That's how it is. Everybody has their due time. You had your time twice today. He had theirs. Now it's Mr. Jackson, I'm asking Mr. Jackson to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, I want to reiterate, this is not a new field. The field's there. We're just refurbishing the field and modernizing the field. It's not a new field. We made that clear, I don't know how many times, but it's just not, for whatever reason, not sinking in. It's not a new field. We received letters from the Superintendent of Schools, the mayor, the councilmen, strongly asking us to improve the field, because they cannot play. They have a whole season of away games. That's a disgrace for the city of Newark, for the kids. That's a disservice to the kids of the community. So we're responding to the leadership of the community to build these fields. And again, it's not a new field.
Mr. President, if I may?
Commissioner Roz, President?
Thank you. We understand that you have a comment, so we appreciate your patience. I'd just like to echo some of the comments that have been made, particularly by Mr. Jackson. So two things that are really important to reinforce here. One, if our kids need and use that field, then we have to make sure that field is tended to. Wequah Park, and this is data that backs this up, this is not hearsay. Wequah Park is the most-used park, probably per capita or something, in the entire county of Essex. The second-largest county in the state of New Jersey has this park in the heart of the South Ward of Newark where I was born and raised, that is used the most. So if it is used the most, what does that mean? That means we have to take care of it. And who are our most precious members of our community? Our children. And so if the demand is coming from our schools, right? That our babies deserve to have a field, right? That we have a field in every other city, every other town in Essex, and our kids can't have one in their own backyard? So Wequah Park baseball team, and Wequah High School baseball team can't, right? So the demand is coming, number one, from the young people, that's who we're responding to. Number two, this was not lost on us in the December meeting. So something that I shared, something that other members of the board shared, and that was echoed by Mr. Zaitz, right? Which is that even when we are making fixes and renovations to the parks and other county facilities, it's our job, one as county commissioners, and certainly as an administration, to make sure that the community understands what's happening, and preferably knows in advance, right? And so something that I think we can improve on is making sure that, particularly in Wequah Park, but frankly, anywhere in our county parks and across the county, when we are having renovations or updates, that people know what's happening, why, how long it'll be, and what's the demand for it. So one of the things that we're working on, and something that I'm going to take as a personal commitment to do, is to have, maybe it's a twice-a-year or quarterly update meeting for the county parks in my district. Hey, these are the renovations that are going to be happening in this park. This is why it's happening. This is what you can expect. That way, people aren't caught off guard. But I think it's important for us to have the facts, and the facts are this. One, this is not a new park or a new baseball field. It's renovations to the most highly-used park in the county of Essex. Two, it's because our kids need it. And our kids are our priority, that's who we're prioritizing. Three, multiple things can be true at once. So one, there's more work that we can do to make sure that the community knows in advance when these renovations are happening. And two, there's more that we can do to make sure that Essex County residents are the ones who are getting a top priority of these parks. What we know, and the data shows us, Mr. Zaitz spoke about this, I want to say at the last meeting, is that there is no preferential treatment for other reservers of these parks outside of Essex County. In fact, to my understanding, maybe this could be corrected by someone from the administration, Essex County residents have priority. Maybe Mr. Jackson, you can speak to that. So I just hope that's clear, and I see you nodding your head. And if there's some discrepancies there, then we can work together to see how we can fix that. But we're on the same side here, right? And I hope everyone has the facts when we come and have concerns. Thank you.
Michelle Boynton, Wequah Park. I listened to the gentleman, fine, Roz Barak, this person, I don't have kids. I have children. I'm 66, I have Wequah Park ever since I was a little girl. How many, and no disrespect to us, is playing softball in Wequah Park? And they're not all from Essex County. Because we're in Wequah Park, I walk in. I'm in there. People are in Wequah Park, and if you walk in, they will be talking. Yes, it's going to be renovated, it's already, we still have four. So what I'm saying, there's some other thing to do than just play softball, football. My nephews, they do it. I love it, they do it, it's fine. We have, young lady, we skating. We can go, I mean, we can do more than just that. But again, if that's being renovated, and stop with the disrespect, because Roz, Roz in this one, Sharp Jay, Gibson, I grew up with them. They were there, so what? Because Roz won it? Where's his children? We have children that's there, and they are not playing. My nephew played football. They are not all from Essex County, and these people know nothing of what is going on in that park. They, what's this? What they do? So if they have information on what's going on, and give them the right to have an option, okay? We're going to do this. Because I spoke with the gentleman when they was opening up for Lions Gate. Hey, talk to me, it's going to take money, but we can do it. So we can do it, do it. Stop getting mad at somebody because they're telling you their heart is hurting. Any one of you down in Wequah Park? No, none of you, everybody else, you in Wequah Park walking? You in Wequah Park playing? No, you're not. And how long? And what towns? You're not there. We've been there, our kids need more than just baseball, football. Give them something. And the adults, the older people, oh, we, they ain't playing no softball. And you can't play softball all year round. So again, oh, well, go to Branchford. Why? We from South Ward, why we got to go to Branchford Park? So let's take care, and let's just start respecting each other. Stop getting mad because somebody have an opinion. Everybody has opinions. So what, Roz Barak, that was not even, my daughter work for Roz, so what? Roz is not down in Wequah Park. I ain't seen them there. South Ward Councilman, Pesha in the school, these kids want skate. Anybody said anything about that? You checked with the schools? You checked with Omar Run, you checked with Wequah High School, again?
Ma'am, I know you're directing it at me.
No, no, no.
We believe in home rule here. The home rule of your community is your elected officials.
We got that.
Just like other communities ask us to do things, we do it. So when we're called out and we're not listening to the community...
You are going to say, "Excuse me."
I just want you to know that, though.
Our elected officials, officials again, what we have an official now. Anybody got problems with that? So it doesn't matter who elected who. When you get in to do a job, you're supposed to do it. So I'm just saying, we all can respect each other in here. I'm only saying you, because you said that. And I can look up at the ceiling so I don't look at one person. I'm not directing it, you said that. So that's why I said, well, Roz, my daughter work for him. I know his mom. So that means nothing, though, he's not in Wequah Park. And if they're all for it, then come and tell us. Have a meeting with the kids, have a meeting with the people in the South Ward. You know, I say, hey, listen, this is what we're going to do, so everyone won't get upset. We're not adding a fourth baseball field, we're adding to that one. And then later, we can add to something else, because it's enough of the park. That's all. So no disrespect to anybody, but I wish everybody would understand everybody's heartfelt feelings and stop getting headaches and yelling. Don't do that. Because I'm sorry that you yelled that, and then she's fingers pointing to her. We are adults. And this is supposed to be for everyone, so everyone has an opinion. I have kids, I have grandkids, you know, they in Wequah Park. So I'm just saying, let's keep it, let's beautify, and let's just try to start having respect for each other as human beings, I mean...
30 seconds.
February, Martin Luther King, let's act like he died for a reason, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Dana Murray, Newark resident. Dana Murray, Newark resident. As a resident of the city of Newark who frequents Wequah Park, I just wanted to add that I frequently walk, not jog, but walk through the park, talk to residents that's in the park. Unfortunately, I think some of the miscommunication is coming in, because there was a follow-up to the concerns that was echoed by the community. I think some residents were not in the follow-up meetings when that was discussed. So to the credit of Mr. Jackson, he did a very thorough report on what was going on with the baseball field, that it was not being a new field, but it was being renovated. He also talked about the skate park that residents talked about, that they wanted, that that was being worked on. So a lot of things that's being raised tonight are being raised because people weren't in the meeting where it was presented and discussed thoroughly about what was the upcoming event, to that point. I would also like to add, as a Newark resident, that the schools that are using the Wequah Park to play baseball is Wequah, Wequah was one of the schools in Shabazz, that are both located in the South Ward. And while I understand that people, residents, want to have space to do other things, I get all of that. We also have to also prioritize students who actually use the park. Wequah does not have a baseball field, and neither does Shabazz. So they utilize the park. So the reason why the superintendent and the mayor of Newark put in this letter suggesting that we prioritize fixing the parks, because if they did not do that, it would not be a field qualified for them to play baseball in. So the reasoning behind the baseball field was clearly centered around the needs of the students in the city of Newark. If that is an issue, I would suggest that you go to the school board meeting and possibly ask superintendent why they needed the field, and that could be better explained, that for students in Newark, the park, this particular park, which is in close proximity to their schools in the South Ward, was a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Norm Suteria, 99 Berkeley Avenue, Bloomfield, New Jersey. Open space, no matter whether you live in Newark, whether you live in Bloomfield, it's tight. There is not enough open space for everyone. We encounter that even at Watts Essing Park, where there's a soccer field that's utilized by the Glen Ridge Soccer Team, because they don't have any place to go. So I haven't explored it, because I don't have any information in front of me. But what is the formal policy of the Parks Department when it comes to prioritizing reservations at county parks? That's what I want to know. So what's the policy? Who gets, you know, you were talking about Shabazz and...
Shabazz, I was in Wequah, they didn't have a baseball.
Exactly. But this collaboration of figuring out prioritization of who, you know, reservations, as well as a timeline. The athletic directors know, right now, more than likely, their schedules for baseball, for softball, for soccer, for field hockey, for lacrosse, whatever sport you're talking about that utilizes a field, track and field. So I think that that's important for every resident, no matter what park they utilize, to understand. And then, as you were mentioning, collaborate, to really have a conversation.
We're addressing the board, not the audience.
Okay, very good. Let's shift gears a little bit. So, talk about the responsiveness of our elected officials. And I don't know what the standard is for the county commissioners when it comes to how quickly you respond to constituents. And one commissioner that I reached out to in particular, and I just checked my email, it took me a good two, two and a half months to get a response via email. That is unacceptable. That is absolutely unacceptable to me as a resident, to me as a constituent,